Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Bowling Green Town Council April 5th, 2018 meeting. Would you please join me in this listening?
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a form everyone's present. The town attorney is currently via phone. She should be here in a very short bit. And I will open the first public hearing of the night on proposed FY '19 water sewer rates. I believe there was a sign up sheet that went around if you wanted to speak. Please make sure your name's on that sheet. Okay, and... Okay, and just as a reminder so we can keep order and keep the meeting in a timely fashion, there shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. Those speakers shall address the council more than once during the public comment period at any single council meeting. The town clerk will time the speakers and notify them when their time has expired. Copies of the detailed rules are located on the back table. We're gonna begin the public hearing with a short presentation from the town manager going over the proposed water sewer rate.
Mr. Kam, is this a sign up sheet that if you'd like to speak, you'll sign to meet with that?
Yes.
Just bear with us, we just had it working, I saw it.
Hey, sweet Cam, here comes some presentations. Everybody have one? Why they're trying to address those issues. A little bit on process. This is the first set of hearings on the water rate. This one, we wanted to get out early to get community feedback. The official hearing on the rates and adoption of the rates will be held when we do the final budget adoption. And the board will be setting a date for that sometime later April. There'll be ads in the new official paper, the Fredericksburg paper, notifying you what the rates will be advertised. There may be these, or they may be another set that they directly to adjust. I do need this mic, otherwise I don't think we'll be able to hear them. As you know, I started here basically a year ago today. And I came in, the town was beginning to go through a process of re-militating their sewer system. If you're aware, that you just took out a general obligation bond into approximately $2 million worth of sewer line replacement through the summer. Prior to that, several hundred thousand dollars worth of sewer was required. And the water system has a similar set of needs that are upcoming. The...our primary problem is that there's been a lot of deferred maintenance on the system. That combined with cross-subsidization of the water and sewer systems by the general fund. One of the conditions of USDA funding for your sewer system was that you make up pay for yourselves, that you totally self-contain operating enterprises. This chart, one of the principles we tried to follow in putting together a rate structure was to look at why you were in this situation, and ultimately after we proposed a rate structure, how you stack up to other communities of similar size. There's a company, Drake Report, that does a survey of all the water and sewer rates of communities that want to participate. Bowling Green hasn't, but the Caroline County has, and Fort Royal has. And they allow you to enter your own data to see how you compare to others throughout the state on rates. And this is what this chart is. And while you can read it from here, the lower one here is basically, that's affordability. Where are your rates in relationship to your income? And you can see that you're well within the green area, that your rates can be handled, current rates can be handled. How are your rates compared to other communities? This chart right here. You can see that you're way below the normal, what they put in the cautionary zone, is that usually if you're charging rates in that area, you're not recovering your cost. And that's what this is here. You're in the red. Last year's, from last year's audit, your utility systems ran a deficit of $252,000. So that's the extent of how much general taxes have been subsidizing. And this lower one here deals with availability fees and connection fees. So your rate remains from the state on that. This chart is useful life. I'll just use two examples, two smaller from this distance. But your water tanks are expected to last 40 to 60 years. Your water meters have to be accurate 10 to 15 years. Your water meters are, but for a few, are beyond the useful age. You have a water tank right out here next to the building that's 70 to 80 years old. No one bought it, it was used when we bought it. This was done several years ago by web engineer. And it shows water mains in red were immediately of replacement. I know this Davis Port one, we were trying to do it this year, but we ran short of funds. And I think we've already had three breaks this year routinely as rates all the time. So the red, and then the yellow, were in the next few years that you should be looking at replacing. So you can see that you have a good share of the distribution system that has outlived its useful life. Again, before I came here, we did some sewer projects, which drew down, there had been some fund balance that the allot box that had been accumulated over the years for some of these replacements, that was spent down. South Main project, Maury Avenue project, and then some repairs that the DEQ ordered at your plant last year, sewage treatment plant. I'm gonna show you some things of what deferred maintenance looks like. Those are your county utility trucks. All rusted out at the bottom, no seats in them, steering wheels without any rubber lift on it. Materials stored outside, and the weather, weathering can become useless. We had the air conditioning heating system malfunction down there. When the repairman came down there, he said, "Well, this might be one of your problems." That filter was changed in the 30, 2012, six years. He's making the compressor run all the time. Other issues, I'm not changing the filter. Down at our drying pads, this is just one, but all the gutters have fallen off. They sit where they fall. The erosions are turning down there. Fire hydrants abandoned and just camped off. This is on Hardy Drive. We replaced one, but there was two in a row. And they fixed it, it was, I'll say, properly installed, so there was additional cost. I'm putting the name correctly this week where we replaced that one. Portions of the plant, when it broke down, instead of fixing it, they abandoned it. This is polymer mixing. When it goes into the treatment processor, polymers have to be mixed at certain rates for the process to work right. Parts broke down to plants, they just abandoned. They all had a purpose, we never put in there. We plan on trying to get this week, but right now they just sort of play it by ear, tossing polymer, and sort of guessing if they're getting the right mixtures. Our list stations and control panels, both in our wellhouses, list stations, they're corroded. Their wiring is corroded on the inside, sort of the safety hazard. Also, a lot of the wiring that's been done hasn't been mapped. When we worked on our sand filters down here, on our control panels, wires had disconnected. New wires put in, nothing had been noted until what was directing them on. And all that, plus the increased money when you go in to fix it. In our wellhouses, chlorine's been stored on the inside instead of the outside. You do have some natural form for the process that will deteriorate some of your pipeline material. Open this stored on the inside, you accelerate those processes. These are the doors, you can see they're rusted out. Matter of fact, on the inside, it's all separated, it's dispoiled. That's the electrical box right behind that door, and all the metal inside those wellhouses are corroded and will need replacing. Matter of fact, it's eaten out the piping in them, so recently we have to revalve it in there. Again, those are expensive ones. DEQ ordered us to, this is a break, right on the side, what that does is when big objects come into the treatment plant, instead of letting them into the oxidation dish, they need to be pulled out of there so they don't stop the motors and disrupt the process. That had been broken down, and again, just not replaced. DEQ said, "No, you need to replace it." And then sand filters, can't see much, but recovered, but that's part of the process, the sand filters have been functionally stopped for a year or two, just because they had outlived their useful life, their ability to filter. Those two items alone cost $220,000, and there's many more items like that, and then again, that drew down those funds, those funds that they haven't set aside, not to So where do we go now? We've got all these capital costs facing us. We have spent down all the town's reserve funds, and we're not covering our cost for operations. That is the facts. That's where the town's at, right one or different. I'm an outside person, just got a financial background, I'm just telling you the facts. That's where you're at. The current structure, as I said, doesn't generate sufficient revenues for operations or capital. It's a system that nobody can explain, all these percentage multipliers to calculate the rates. There's 100% multiplier, or 260, or the 295, 282, and 339, and there's a, at one point in the form, it is 100% surcharge for out-of-town people because we already applied other factors. Rate structures are usually tiered to accomplish certain purposes. Most communities for, by and large, unless they have big investors, they want to give incentives to draw the town, they tier them for water conservation. The more water you use, the higher the rate goes. We pay more the more water you use, we have to pay for more electricity, more chemical, more wear and tear on the plant, and possibly have to expand the capacity of the system, both in storage and new wells. So it's in everybody's interest to conserve water, to keep operating cost and capital cost down in the long run. So normally you want to tier those to do that. We have a tiered system, but there's such minute changes between the rates and different tiers, that it doesn't generate any real additional revenues, and it doesn't really encourage conservation. So it just adds complexity without accomplishing its goals of generating additional revenues. So the goal we had, when we set out to look at the rate structure, was to simplify it, generate revenues sufficiently to cover capital costs and operating costs, and to create conservation incentives for the reasons that this did. As you're all aware, the current rate structure, you do it bi-monthly, you have two components. You have a fixed minimum charge, and then your usage charge, and you have two classes, commercial and residential, and then in town and out of town. And that's your current rate structure. Now, the Caroline County model does it a little bit differently. I think it's one that's used pretty widely. It assesses certain, what your minimum charge is sort of set to do. Some of your fixed costs, if you want to cover, you want to set aside some capital costs for replacement of your equipment. If they have a 10-year useful life, if you're depreciating it, you should be setting aside 10% percentage each year when you know you're gonna have to replace it. And then administrative costs, the cost of reading the meters and mailing the meters, office staff flipping. And then your usage, and again, on a, from a gallon basis, a charge. And as you can see, they're more tiered in their rates than we are in the same in the sewer. And then they have the similar two classes, commercial and residential. So when we went through various options, we thought that the county model made sense. It's one that residents in the area are used to. It's also sort of to gauge what your rates are compared to your neighbors in the county. So what we did is, we adopted the rates and the total base charge that they charge on their folks, but we allocated it a little bit differently than they did to meet our needs as far as base charge administered and capital. But the bottom line, the minimum charge of those three, we set at the same level as the county. And we did the same for the commercial, but we did the commercial at the lowest tier, which is basically, because most of our users are considered small commercial users, it's at the residential rate, but it has a higher base cost. Now, the base cost on the same size pipes we had out here was $225 for these commercial before they got to usage. The smallest commercial user, they had to use that rate to set it. So the help is start accumulating capital cost. Those fixed fees on administrative and capital cost, those two alone will generate $57,000 for our sewer system, and for our water system, $90,000. As I showed you, these two pieces of equipment down there cost us $200,000. So what does that mean to you compared to where you're at now? And again, we're going from a bi-monthly to a monthly process, so staff calculated what your current rates would look like on the new scale on a monthly basis. And at that monthly, this is just that what you use over the years, 12,000 two months, we'll look at it as 6,000 on a monthly basis. Again, as you go up, the more water you use, now the higher the bill, but the higher impact on you. Again, the law infers conservation, that's in our interest as far as operating cost and long-term capital cost. So it ranges from 7% on the 1,500 gallon user to the 10,000 gallon user, 67%. Out-of-town users, percentages are lower, but their base cost is higher. There is one adjustment, I'm gonna talk to the board on the base cost for a commercial user out-of-town, I had to set $2 lower than the commercial base price for in-town, and we'll correct that, so we'll make the, bump the commercial rates $2 for each class there. But again, they're paying, they're gonna end up paying more than the town users, they're gonna pay more than similar users in the county, because they're gonna be paying a very expensive bill at the county, even with, and so you know, the county, I understand, raised these rates just this last week, or in the process of raising them. So these are the pre-rate, rates that they announced this year. Now, there again, you can't read that, but that's Bowling Green, as I showed you. You're way down on the rates. You want to keep all the red on affordability, but as you'll see, most small communities, because of limited resources and large capital costs and operating costs, generally have to get in the yellow zone. That's Caroline County. You can see they're right on the, they're still in the green, the rates are still in the green. They're a little high on their availability and connection fees. This is what Bowling Green will look like after the rates. You're just getting into the yellow zone. the yellow zone, the urine comes here a little bit lower than the county, that's why you start getting in the yellow zone on affordability. Your rates in comparison to the other systems in the state is still in the green, same, you're still in the mainstream is what rates are. And again, your availability and connection fees are right where they should be. I tried to pick towns of similar size and users, again, using this database to see how you can compare. This community, they get where they're at, they had to get up in the red to get rates anywhere to ours, so, and they didn't add any, they didn't put the data in there on cost recovery. Here again, in two more towns, again, you can see, these smaller towns, they've gotten up to where they're in the red, their rates are still a little bit lower than ours, same over here, they got in the red, they're still in the yellow, but, small towns, that's the, to pay for your systems, you can see the pattern is, is you're going to be right side in that zone, and up, and then at right-hand half of the rate structure, not down here in the lower left yellow. And that's all I have as far as presenting, how we got to where we're at.
Well, I'll speak to the chairman, do you want to take questions right now, or do you want to take them off?
We did the public comment, and then we'll come back to questions.
All right, we will. We will start with the public comment, and I'll start with the list, Mr. Jim Day.
I'll answer my question. You mentioned sewer and bore, but there's no mention of the component, the trash collection. Is that, that's included in the bill that we now pay?
That's a separate fee that would be added, or through the order, just like it is now. That fee is staying the same.
Okay, because I, you know, I think the one thing that comes to my mind, and I have a home in Bowling Green, I have a business on Fort Allison, the main street, and actually, when I look at my home and my office, they happen to both be occupied by the same number of people right now, there are two people in my commercial building, and there's no kitchen, we only have a coffee mess, so we dispose of coffee grounds, we dispose of magazines, but all of the newspaper, all of the paper that we need to preserve from scrutiny shouldn't be thrown in the trash at all, goes to a service that shreds it. So, I have much less impact on my commercial building than I have in my home, which is occupied by my wife. Although there are no baths taken at my office, so there's really a vast discrepancy in the rates I pay between my commercial office and my home. I do commend the town for the way you do trash disposal, because by having trash disposal done by a contractor, you avoid the cost of workers' compensation, the cost of general liability, some of the other exposures that you don't have to pay to your insurance carrier, because that's all paid for. When we pay the fresh component of our bill, and you pay the contractor, there's no other cost. Some of the problems that the town has appears from your presentation are mismanagement and malfeasance. You know, I'm sorry that the equipment that was repurchased has not been properly cared for, but you can't expect the citizens to pay for poor management on the part of the administrative tank. And that's just something that I think needs to be reconsidered. Before I return, I was in the insurance business, and the thing that we've always tried to do, and always stress with our insurance carriers, is if you need, if you need a small rate increase, take the small rate increase every year, and don't wait until you go four or five years without an adjustment, and then you have to take a big bite. And I urge town council to look at that. You can't afford to take a huge increase, even though you're in distress right now. It's not our fault you're in distress, it's your fault you're in distress. We weren't asked to participate in the management of the sewer and bore system, we look to you all to do that, and Shane O'Geehan did a very good job. Now, that's not your fault as town manager, but there are people who lived here the past 10 years, I've been here since 1997, we paid our fair share, and I don't wish to pay, now that I'm in the tower, I don't wish to see my expenses escalate because of reasons that I haven't looked for, but, thank you very much.
Mr. Bobby Beathery.
I own three rental properties here at town, so, actually, when everything goes up, it means I got to do something for rent, but I have to agree with Jim on this thing. My air filter, it takes maybe five minutes to change it at the most, and five bucks, and it's no sense in something being that bad of shape, you know, somebody that's liking doing the jobs, taking care of the stuff, maintenance is a lot cheaper than replacing all this equipment, like a truck. I mean, you can get a poster we do to see them for a couple hundred bucks, but spending $40,000 for a new truck. And when you show them that the equipment that was shut down and bypassed because of lack of maintenance, what kind of water quality are we getting with all that stuff being going on? A lot of times I get this junk in the mail telling me they'll be planted pieces and stuff that's maybe cross-connected to water and sewer lines or something. I'm concerned about the water quality, and they show the wire corrosion in these pump houses. Anybody that's worked in that field will know that chlorine will eat up the bars and stuff like crazy. That's a crazy thing to do, is put actual chlorine tanks in it, you need to add a little lumen to it to keep that separate from the switchgear and all that kind of stuff, it will definitely eat up, that's what's eating that sewer up and a lot of the other stuff. If I'm correct on this, I think last year, a couple years ago, what it was, did the town contribute $40,000 to the so-called assisted living place that don't exist? That was money we could have used for maintenance. And I don't know, like the water line that's running to New York or the water and sewer that, who pays for it? Do the customers are paying for it, or am I paying for it? I mean, I'm not using it, I pay for my own stuff. The bi-monthly billing versus monthly, even if you do increase it, I think you should stay with the bi-monthly because of the paperwork these girls are going to have to do, actually, they'd be billing everybody every month and collecting bills and all that stuff, it's a lot cheaper to do it one time every two months than it ever been. I think you...
This is many things that I know and did, but when I saw the order like a tapestry, and I sat down and figured out the power water bill, I'm going, wait, if we're going to get a 30% increase on the water bill, I feel like they lost a lot of the lines of this type of stuff during storms. Did we turn around and allow them to jump it up to 30% and we were going to pay it? I spoke with council members, I was told for the last three years there have been great increases. What happened to that next year? I also, you can check with the Caroline County office, they have quite a bit in their last edition. Fort Oil is now putting in a power unit water system. Project is estimated at six months, but completion project in September. There was a project cost of $1,001,000 and some odd cents. There is a grant that is going to be $811,000 with a loan of $6,000. Has Bowling Green considered, are they getting grants? Has any grants been written up and asked for? It shouldn't go back on the citizens to make up in one year what should have been taken place all along. As a homeowner, as a budget keeper, if we need a new roof, we put it on, we don't wait for it to fall in on us, and then lose our walls, and they can build new houses, and that appears to be working on the council, considering filling everything one time at a time. That is too much to put on the citizens, and to look at the citizens. There are a lot of elders who are retired, who haven't been going on, or whatever. How many social security payments or retirement payments increased by 30%? Anybody get them? Anybody that's working and drawing the salary, did you get 30% rates? I don't. If you did, then I'm part of the work.
Good evening, gentlemen, how you doing? Ladies, too. Anyway, this certain thing is kind of shocking when I first saw it, I said, well, what kind of people they're doing, but I didn't get 30% rates in a lot of time either. And also, as far as the rates go, you said you could check all around and read the law, and then you come back and say, Louise is lower than we are. So, and I talked to my son-in-law just yesterday, he lives in Chesterfield, and he pays a whole lot less than we do. So it's all along the line, you're not getting your figures right. And so, I would like to know where you get your tickets from. And as far as working on the lines, and like Jim said earlier, a lot of stuff is just purely maintenance, just working on it, getting it clean. The filter, that was ridiculous. And so, really, I don't want, I don't want to say, I get paid, but I talk to my family.
Good evening, council. I'm glad to see y'all here tonight, I appreciate the opportunity to get to speak, and I also appreciate all the town residents, anybody that's here tonight, too. I have comments and/or I have a question for Mr. Pax, so I don't know, which shall I do first?
This is the public comment section.
Okay.
On just the rate, water and sewer rates.
But the question relates to what came out of the paper.
Is it regarding the water and sewer rates? You can ask the question, we'll address it in the...
Okay, all right, I'll do my comments first and do that for you. First of all, I'd like to say that this entire scenario of water, sewer rates, when I first heard about it, I was shocked, the whole scenario was shocking. And I could not read your slide up there a few minutes ago, but when I think I saw 2,000 gallons, 27%, and, I don't, I can't even find myself here. Anyway, 27% just for the water, that's not counting the sewer rate, did I say 47%? I think.
It's combined.
27%.
Every is combined.
Okay, anyway, the whole scenario, anything regarding it, my opinion is shocking, and a lot of my, all the neighbors here have already made the comments, well, I'm a senior citizen too, and I stand making tell you, my husband's retired, I'm semi-retired, we cannot sustain such things, and I also echo whomever just mentioned about social security, that's very true, we don't get 30% raises. Last year we got half a percent, this year I think we got a little more, first time ever. Also, I'd like to echo our predecessor that mentioned about grants, I think that is a wonderful opportunity, you just have to sit down and do the paperwork, and I really, really feel like y'all should pursue that avenue before you go with a new structure. Also, back to what I mentioned a second ago, now that we are in the tower, I do not feel like I can sustain such an increase in my household expenses as what is proposed. And also, I'll ask one question then. Do you have a whiteboard that you could put some numbers up on? No, okay. Well, I was going to ask you, if you could take whatever I saw on here, put it on some numbers on a whiteboard, and do a comparison between the old and the new. Example, I tried to figure out, say, 1,000 gallons on here, how much it would cost, I thought maybe you could put some numbers up on a whiteboard, it would benefit me, and I feel like it would benefit all of us too, to see what type of numbers you're talking about. If you had a whiteboard where you could put some numbers on there.
He has a handout, a chart that he can hand out, we'll get him, we'll get his book off, we'll get time to read it by him.
Is in a comparison, to me, would be very nice to have, say, if you, I don't have the new meters, we'll be working with the new system or whatever may be. How can we compare the old and the new? I would like to see that comparison, how much the cost would be, the difference. Because now you're doing, we're doing thousands of gallons, are we doing it the same way? Are you using the same meters? Will that be new meters installed? How is it, what is the infrastructure? Thank you.
That completes the list I have, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak regarding the...
I'm Mark Farmer, and, well, I have two questions I want to answer, I don't have any right now. I just built a house that I want to farm dry, so I pay all the tuition fees to do that. My question is, why is the out-of-town, what's rationale for out-of-town rates that are higher than in-town rates? I'd like to know what that, the reason for that is. And the other is, if these rates are to pass, and we are to have these increases, then have you ever considered transitioning these rates over a period of time, rather than have such a large impact on a lot of fixed incomes in town? Authority set increases is pretty stiff, you know, on people, so I was wondering, have you ever considered transitioning these rates over a period of time to neutral?
I'll try to address, I'll try to address some of the questions. On rates, what, as I was trying to stress in the presentation, is rates are generally higher in smaller communities because of the capital cost and operating cost, particularly the capital cost of not spread across a large number of users, and that's why I'm feeling that Chesterfield can generate more dividends. So, the numbers, the numbers are provided by the communities, and put out on a website by a nonprofit group, that EPA funds to provide information to small communities and large communities, and also provide additional help to us who are looking for grants, matter of fact, on the utility... Matter of fact, on the utility vehicles, we just got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant on the, those vehicles that we saw. And we got twenty-five thousand dollars on the police car. So, two of the vehicles this year that we replaced, we got fifty thousand dollars worth of grants from USDA. We didn't qualify for grants under the sewer program. Part of the issue there is how we structured, we're working on a water system. And we're trying to ensure that when we structure that, we'll do it in the interim next month. The grants, I mean, we'll talk next Thursday to the USDA representative. We're thinking on grants. But the, as far as trying to piece them up, is we've got critical things that we ran out of money on this year. Our electrical box is going to be replaced. We've got a dam fire hydrant that can't be replaced. We've got broken valves that can't be replaced. Newers that need to be replaced. And there's no money there. And it just keeps getting worse and worse. And ultimately, like we're having now, the sewer plant, the EDQ did come in here and go, say, you better replace that. And they can tag up boxes, they're sure to get it. So, we're at the point where I can't see, our gas system can't make the system work, but revenues never generate. And that's not a good answer to the capital cost by a customer, they're conscious. On the rates, I did prepare, let you see what the current rate system in the slides there. I made it on a full sheet so you can see the comparison of the current rate across the water versus the new ones. And we were trying to, also, we have one whiteboard that maybe we can pay a thousand dollars off. One thing we don't have the luck for, just so you know, the county's costs are actually higher. County subsidize the current rates for county votes at a thirty percent rate. Your tax dollars, just so you know, the general fund tax dollars are subsidizing those numbers. Just need to go out to the revenue page and just see that they transferred about one percent of the money to the, to the utility fund to maintain their rates there. We don't have that much. Our tax base doesn't generate that much. In the increased fees of the last two years, we get two addresses that with increased total of three thousand dollars over the last two years. We had one offset with the plant that cost us fifty thousand dollars. The wells about what they're used for. And we put the pump core over here, and we put the well pump, the casing pump, that's twenty thousand dollars. So, just, they go down the litany of the things that have happened, and just one or two of them keep up all those regular expenses. And once they break, I've got to fix them, and what they say. The town at one time had close to one point six million dollars in reserve funds. And the budget were hundred percent, we were going down to five hundred thousand dollars. The reason for monthly rates versus bi-monthly, is we need cash flow, working capital for the business people. We do a property tax, we start incurring our bills in July, but we do not collect our revenues until December. The then franchise tax, our second biggest revenue reason, we don't receive until June of this year. The depot tax, another major revenue, we don't receive until basically this last month. So, we draw down our cash through the year. And what brings the point, or my recommendation is, there's two ways to go out and borrow money. Make sure you have sufficient working capital, that you pay interest and you pay place deposit to the owners and the tenants to do that. Or to accelerate your revenues. So, that's why we're looking at that, to accelerate monthly payments to keep the cash flow as high as possible. Oh, yeah, the water is safe, safe to use. We test that in each year with the quality report out on our web page. So, as far as the public water, that's like, I'm not sure if that one I should take. Three oh one, that's been paid for by general property tax and twenty-six percent by, by agreement. Paid for the landowners directly with special tax on that.
Just briefly asking a question about fifty thousand dollars. That was repaid back.
That was repaid back to the town from the Caroline County. And it's in the EDA fund with the time.
I can't stand that. But there is.
The funds for the line up to New York City, I don't know if it's a painful budget.
Yes, it is. A special tax district formed for the three oh one project, that the town in the property was paid for that project. As far as the in-town rate versus the out-of-town rates, we will get you a firm answer on that. But council advised me to get that answered, and don't answer it on the top. So, we'll get you an answer.
Man, yes, please. I'll make a statement and ask a question.
Come, wing up this, so everybody can hear you. Anyway, it's also recorded.
I think I still under my three minutes. All the people that you see in this room that live in the town of Bowling Green are paying taxes for Bowling Green real estate and property taxes. These same people are also paying real estate and property taxes in the Academy of Carolina. The only thing that we're not paying in the Academy of Carolina are the use taxes or use fees for sewer water and trash. We're participating in paying for the police protection of the town, and we're paying that in the town of Bowling Green as well. So, we're being double taxed. I was audited twice by the IRS when I first came to Bowling Green, because they couldn't believe I was so stupid as to pay taxes in two locations. And while I was out of government, so that's something that's, that occurs in small towns. Those of us that live in Bowling Green, love Bowling Green, and we don't mind paying those extra taxes. It stings a little bit, but we do ask some full balance and adjusting these fees, these use fees, as I stated before.
Thank you. Come to the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Valerie Oil, G fourteen, Marietta. Just a quick question. We're all recalled of the maintenance here. I have read about these, my maintenance pales in comparison to this maintenance. My concern is, if you're here tonight, you're asking for increase to fix the maintenance that has been totally disparted over ten-year period or however long it's been. Do the people who you hire have training for this maintenance? Can you assure that in five years, we're not going to back there with another third percent increase, ten percent increase, or whatever, on two, we'll be joining the ranks of the titering, maintenance? So, I think we're all curious as to why people who should be doing maintenance aren't doing it. It's common sense, I own a pool, I would never put chlorine in a closed environment. So, I think training of some sort needs to be operated, and some additional leadership for that training of people who've worked for the town. And that's about it, I appreciate it and thank you. And I guess I'll look forward to serving some increase because I'm assuming that's going to happen.
Don't say that! No, no, no!
Anyone else that would like to address?
Don't say that!
Make a brief statement. Just so you know, this public hearing is exactly what it is. These rates are not set in stone. We will act on these until we approve the budget, so we have some time to make adjustments. But the public hearing has done what it's needed to do, and it's let council know that the citizens are concerned, and we do take that to heart. I will address the training issue. We do have new personnel on staff, and I am fully confident that the current personnel on our staff can handle any issues that are brought up on the water or sewer system. And that's why we are at this point, is that the new administration, the new public works director, the new employees, they've all, we've just got new staff that has come on board. And with that new leadership, it has brought up our trained licensing operators to a higher number than we've had in many years. So, we are fully certified to run this system. I can't guarantee you that we won't be back in a future for a rate increase. Nobody knows what catastrophic failure could occur. But we do take this to heart. Each one of us also encourages that thirty percent increase. So, we are trying to be as diligent with the tax dollars as possible. So, bear with us, we will work through this. We'll go back and we'll crunch some numbers and we'll see what we can do to maybe span this over a couple-year increment, build out. But at this point, I'm embarrassed by those pictures myself. I've been myself on council for many years and didn't realize that we're at that point. But I want to assure you that the current staff is very capable of producing safe and reliable water. And that will never be brought into question. We will do what we have to do to make sure that we provide a safe water. And at this point, with council, you don't have to address them, you have to open it up. The town will close this public hearing.
Why'd they ask you such a hard question? Hey, you're truly saying you do.
They get acquisition coming to the warning.
Okay, we thought we had it turned off. I'd like to open the second public hearing of the night in reference to this two thousand eighteen dossier for free to amend chapter one general provision of the town code to add a section, summons system fee. Is there anyone here that would like to address council in reference to this matter? Chief Wiltson, would you like to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment in reference to this? It's in reference, we just opened the public hearing in reference to the collection of electronic summon system fee.
Yes, basically, this is not, should retain on this, not in business, enforcement system pieces as well. It's a five-dollar fee that's currently being collected. This time, the county ground is absorbing each five dollars in summon system. The latest direct, this representation of electronic summons is in software.
Is there anyone else or anyone that would like to address council on this matter? Second call. We will close the public hearing for that ordinance. Is the will of the council to act on that ordinance at this time, or would you like to do that to me? Definitely have a motion? Definitely have a motion by Mark?
No.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion? One more roll call? As heavy, all. Moving along to the public comments section of the meeting. Is there anybody that's here to, that would like to speak to council in regards to any matters? Please come to the podium and state your name.
I can, one through South Main Street. Thank you, Council. I'm going to have an opportunity to stand here before you tonight, and I'm disappointed that my audience left, because I really wanted everybody to hear my comment, because it really pertains to the town and the future of the town. I was born and raised in Carolina County, from a baby up to today, and I'm very disappointed at the status of our town as we speak. I don't know what is happening in Bowling Green, but I really think the council needs to study the town and work with the EDA and try to figure out what is going on here. I have never seen a town in the situation that we presently are. Nobody's, they're not taking in, there's no building. Half of the town businesses are empty. You're losing income, so therefore, we're being taxed for it. I mean, I'm sure somebody's got to make up this lost income. Of course, we lost the banks, too. So, I really need, somebody needs to do a little study, study on something and try to figure out what is wrong with our picture. And I really, really would like to see that happen. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Just so you're aware, the EDA meets once a month, and they welcome you to join them at the public meeting.
Thank you.
Moving along, is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, moving along to staff reports, public works and utilities report.
Alicia and I went to the EDQ class for, for the EMR for, just another grade, just last number. What we had to do each month, it might not have been much, but it was, it shouldn't affect us at all. Still working on the back shea there. I got some things I wanted to try to get dug before July. And I was wanting to get both of them replaced, the party drive, that we had a big issue with. The first one we came to, it didn't have a, it was just laying there, and it was getting ready to blow out. There was no brackets enough to hold it together. So, when we dug it up, we had to dig it up from the hydrant all the way to the main. So when we dug it up, we had to dig it up from the hydrant all the way to the main. And it was... It's hard to explain. It was just all caca. No braces, nowhere to grab it. It was just... It was a mess, so we had to replace it. And I thought, bang, I got a little bit more money trying to find out what I was expecting. Yes. And then, but I still like to try to get the load stations done. And the... I'm right now building a... Three contractors looking at the sidewalks of Main Street, trying to repair it.
Sidewalk of Main Street, do you know? Or did it...
It was.
This is the section in the business district where we remove the trees. This is the section.
Yeah, I'm trying to match it up with the business side. I have some leader boxes on Lee Street I'm trying to get moved, and some bits on those also. I have a truck that keeps backing over and breaking. The rest of them are out on the side on the grass, but for some reason, there was four of them up in the middle of the road that keep breaking, keep running over and replacing them. But it needs to be, you know, set back in the grass together, so what you're going to do on that?
Well, I should have a couple of questions.
Yeah?
Are we flushing the hydrants? Is there a process of flushing the hydrants now?
Yeah, now, we got a PM room now. We're trying to do it like every six months, and it's great.
I guess it's a place about people living in the waters, not good. Or is it getting, uh, black, black ones out? I've had that called about five people around the town. And I said, "It's their particular house," and they were like, "Why?" Somebody mentioned that somewhere else, and it sounded like that there. But might be possible.
Uh, it could be, you know, static waters, how they were doing that. That's one of the reasons we flush the hydrants, especially if it's like someone's not using much water and the town itself is in the line. And then when you get to, you know, to use it, you have to let it run for three minutes. That's one of the reasons you can have to be flushing.
Right. So it's a systematic process to do that? Is it every hydrant or...
Every hydrant, every hydrant.
And there's like seventy-five or eighty plus?
Um, I believe it's like eighty-four.
The other question I would add, too, is how many of our water meters are not flushing the hydrants?
Uh, they're up there. It's probably about... Do you remember, let's initiate it at this, number six? Is that there?
So we have sixty, somewhere in there, we're not working, so that's eight, ten percent of the units.
Nine.
That's about forty-four percent of the units. And maybe all the other part?
I get a report on that. As soon as they... They didn't even pay a hell of a lot of... They give me a report that tells me that we're not up there. Because sometimes they don't look there, and then they have to... Some of them actually have to go and make a profit from that. Some just don't work. They're all... They try to read them, and they ask them for sixty, that they can't do.
I'm in the process of changing the amount now. I'm going to... I have some money in the budget, so I'm taking a portion off. I have a fight back last week with the class. What do you think?
One, the vast, vast majority of our meetings are past, used for this, which means even though we're still doing this, especially in the... Party thirty thousand dollar study grant, study that we have USDA is to look at the situation of the land, and that's the study we're on, uh, doing from the... Are you done with the study on the air?
Aye.
So you know what, technically, we're done? Yeah. It's something I think about. Oh, not me. Did they give you a conference call in your seat?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other question for... Okay, thank you. Moving along to the police chief's report.
This past month, I had to serve a lot of training, two-day service training, to keep my professional and vehicle inspection license. And I just tried to speak out to my four children in the wake of the choosing of the chiefs. So, um, several of the families, I think it's a... Both of them got us further, just by the way. Is there any questions to leave?
It's important, you know, after that guy says six, you know, it's... Two. What is it, six? Oh.
Any other questions? Do you need to the...
Members of town, uh, town council and Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me tonight. You'll notice my report, the... My main focus right now is the Bowling Green Virginia Wine Festival. The weekend before that, on June 2nd, we do have our annual Spring Clean Suite on June 2nd. Marketing graphics will be released for that very soon, so that is... Does precede the wine festival, but it doesn't require quite as much logistics and planning. So things are shaping up really nicely for the Wine Fest. We... Our marketing graphic was released just yesterday. A copy of that is in your packet. I think it turned out pretty, pretty nice. There's another... I put a screenshot in your packet just of a Facebook reading, and this was... This was three hours after this posted on Facebook. It already reached close to four thousand people. Those numbers have increased significantly since then. The graphic, I'm sorry, was released on Monday on social media, and then the printed copies we just got yesterday. So the focus right now is some target marketing for the event. You know, this is a community front event, but of all the events that we do in Bowling Green, this particular event has the most potential for branding and economic development for our town. So that said, I have developed a spreadsheet, done some research, and developed a spreadsheet of all of the real estate agents in Fredericksburg, Hanover, and Caroline County that had at least three active listings in Caroline. So all of those folks, they're listed about, I think it's about forty-five, a list of about forty-five different agents. They'll all be receiving a mailer about the event, inviting them to purchase tickets, bulk of tickets for their loyal clients and their buyers in their database as a gift. So with the idea being that this is not just a wine festival, but it's an opportunity to really showcase Bowling Green. This would be the day to sweep the sidewalks, and if you have residential real estate for sale or commercial real estate for sale, today that is the day to really spiff it up. And pardon me, I'm losing my voice. So right now, we're going full steam ahead on our social media campaign and advertising efforts. You'll see some advertising in the freelance store, I'm sure. We're also looking at rates for Cooperative Living. Jean actually passed on some value information about their community events calendar, so we're... That's free of charge. And so we are on all of those for all of the events in 2018. But we may want to do some paid advertising considering the issue of the Caroline far west, we know more. Cooperative Living actually has a very impressive circulation, not just in Caroline County and Fredericksburg and Richmond, but throughout the state. It's actually very impressive. So right now, we're focused on ticket sales and volunteer recruitment and fine tuning some of the small logistics of the event. I am proud to announce that the Fredericksburg Big Band will be performing, so we'll have some orchestra big band music at the festival this year instead of bluegrass, which we've seen in the last couple of years. We're also getting that at a very, very great rate. Additionally, Bavarian Chef, some of you may be familiar, probably are familiar, located in Fredericksburg, they also have a location in Madison, Virginia, where they have a food truck. Typically, the food truck wouldn't probably not travel this far, but they are coming to the Wine Fest, and we will have a food experience there that's in line with the quality of this, of this event in general. We are also going to be featuring craft beer this year by Three-Natchez Brewing Company, who are coming out from Charlottesville, then also have a brewery in Richmond in Scotts Edition. That would be a very nice addition to our event, and I think it's going to open up the market for some more folks. That beer, the beer sales will also generate a revenue stream to offset costs for the event. So I feel very confident this year that things are, you know, we've done it a couple of times, and third time's a charm, and so I encourage you all to spread the word. If you're on Facebook, please like the event, share it, let folks know about it. We'll be having printed tickets printed and at the various ticket sales locations throughout the town to promote foot traffic to the mixed house or to, you know, Union Bank or the hardware store, Flower Fashion, so those tickets should be available in the next week or so. As always, I continue to promote the town in any way that I can, in all fronts, including the farmer's market, which has been very successful for the last couple of Saturdays and got a lot of positive reviews, and I think the vendors are very happy to be a part of it as well. Bowling Green has given our farmer's market a warm welcome over the last couple of weeks, so we're excited to have them through October. Does anyone have any questions for me? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions when they... Not we want to...
I was just giving that day.
Yes, I wondered about the situation with the Caroline County.
Alicia and I met with the Fisher family, also Son Farm, who was really in there, and made one that had to pay the... Two one hundred and fifty dollars in insurance. So after our talking, the resolution, their point came down to, they have to follow the state record, on the state record that's completely D and D, state of people, are being able to come out and camp. Because previously, apparently, the world is mainly changing. They're not allowed to make the case. It's up to the customer to go in and help them go up. I have also been together with a government there, who have a warehouse in Dillon. They, for some reason, developed a family in Dillon. They had some things that some of them didn't really get them in work. I played with it a high kid. I often knew it from their home, if I went out to the others. So we got that straight, maybe within the other batch, hopefully, near tomorrow or early next week.
It's funny that, just to your point, so you're saying that we won't get a Christmas company tax notice on the last, the DMV records, so all of these people are going to return to the ring. Most of the company tax records, you have to see, is for people that won't have the right to be attacked by a ring.
I actually asked them to do that, because you also went to the Christmas party. And they looked, and they were, they said, "No, I'm being able to label as garage in Dillon," and that would be done.
I'll double check. I thought the one they go, they didn't get the tax notice, well, it actually says to have a ring, and the ones that do get it before.
I haven't seen that, but if you have that, and I can make a copy of the rest, right? So if everyone's been there, we went straight to my local one, and above the car, you're a fellow in Caroline, and that would be a problem. But if you, in this case, I might have to give that back to the show, and if you're in Dillon, have that.
Also, very recently, I'm interested in that.
I don't, I didn't get that together, I don't have that number right on hand, but we were pretty high already on my budget, we were, we were over eighty percent of the budget already. We said they did a little, obviously, a little attack, because of the state and federal tax records, so I don't know.
I think that was two guys that were probably not having a good...
The tax group should be...
While we put like a hole on the tax, we, I was in Carolina, people were coming in. I didn't wait for them to go, and I got an accident, so... We're going forward now, and Alicia and I, we're going to point that if we, you know, we're going to send them out, and we're going to come to us, our event, since there's a revenue saying that we're ready, we're trying to... So when you get a collection, it's... And then on the second, you're D and D, and then the revenue, and then...
Moving along to the town managers' group.
One thing I want to draw your attention to is, is that the M L meeting appointments will do, I think, for eighteen. Marcus Donovan is indicated that he wants to be on one of the committees. If he wants to be, please let him know in the next week, so that's the same idea. I just want to reflect a little bit, as I said earlier, I've been here one year today. I just want to thank everybody for, we have great community effort this year. We've gone through a lot of change in our, in our modern town officials. Main Street, we've got a new block for the summer, but somebody put a great effort, they did a job. And we painted the curves, we put the planters out, we got the speed signs, we have the first chief, he's a president speaker. We made a little bit of a town hall, we created a small environment for people in town office. We've done tremendous things down the plant, too. We fully cleaned that up down there, we made a lot of repairs down there. Really came in, the plant was failing, the drying beds were not working, oxidation which wasn't working. Biologic was loading this over there, our horse name was poor. But at the same time, we've improved new staff, everything's gotten better. At the same time, we're putting new staff, everything's not paid, work through the, the old frustrations of working with contractors that always view us as the smallest, the smallest of data in the world. And they've been committed, we put together job descriptions, paid promises, recruitment, we recruited a great staff that's not licensed, for the first time in a long time, you know, it's Billy, about thirty-five years of experience here, he's been doing the installs down there, he's running it. Just really proud of putting together systems, we have automated work orders through, we're starting to work on investment management practices using tools from the G M B system. Just think of all of this coming into five tires, we're getting, and we've got, it's breaking, not working, orgs is, you know, aside works, we put a compliance policy in place, we brought a, a power compliance business, three oh one, two commercial, we're working on another consent agreement there. We've done things on a short-term budget, still struggling, but we're getting there. We fixed a lot of things going with benefit, short-term hybrid, got the right system in place, we have fixed some things that we can do there. The accounting system is set up, we're not correctly tracking taxes, we're paying the taxes, we've got that fixed, we're doing the lease structure, we're looking at putting together a system to make our charging of our customers rational, including incentives and refunding system. It's even how we work with the board. I don't know how you do it in the past, but I think this adds a lot of structure to our post-division background, but it's staying in line, we've worked from the department and hands, and hopefully set a community system up, so we don't think these days of the past, this council knows what's going on. That's what the communities are for, we're sitting down, we're doing, we're just in the facilities, we're doing, to the personnel, we're just doing, we're doing that. Pretty much this one, like, I think we talked about, we're working on, we're asking, we're going to write around the agenda, before we do, we need to do that, we need to process. It's been a pleasure doing it. Melissa asked me, I'll be looking sort of down, I'll say that's true. I thank you for the, for the, for the, and I just want to thank everybody for their Thank you. Is there any questions on the town managers report? We did, if Mr. Peck did state that correctly, it's a cumulative effort here, we all took them, and we are making improvements in the town, and we still have a long ways to go, and feel this council will keep us in the right path to make that. Moving on to, the next item on the agenda will be the town managers' FY two thousand Some of the, I wanted to share with the council are the goals that I had, strategic goals that I had when I structured the budget. I believe in transparency, we're trying to structure the budget so you can get the clearest picture of what was taking place in the most understandable fashion. One of the things, just an observation, I know that when I first looked at the budget, we had activities, just in various budgets throughout there, there was no way to know exactly what you were spending on activities and how much general funds were going to support. So what I wanted to do is group things in categories where you could get a good overview of what was taking place. Public Works, I wanted to put your trash collection, streets and sidewalk, playground, litter grants, town hall, all those activities that Public Works is in charge of, so you can get a holistic picture of what your Public Works were doing and the cost of those activities.
What's a litter grant?
We get a grant from the state, about a thousand dollars a year, to run some type of litter program by garbage bags or garbage cans or have some sort of cleanup weekend. And Billy's got to figure out how to, what type of program he's going to use it. Have you picked one, Bill?
Yeah, I'm going to, the Carolina County football team's going to come up and pick up trash.
Good, means it.
Yeah. And that's an annual grant, and actually the guidelines, I just got an email on that this week. Events and activities, again, Clean Sweep, Falling on the Green, Music on the Green, USO Dance, Harvest Fest, Town Hall activities, all those activities were various points. I'm proposing that we put together all in one fund, and see what it generates in revenues and what exactly are all your activities costing you in general funds. Same thing, we had donations set up on three or four different lines, we put them all into one category, so you know by just going to one spot. And again, setting up separate capital reserve funds or capital funds for the water and sewer, so we can start funding on an annual basis our depreciation and long-term replacement in capital investments in our water and sewer utilities. Along those lines, trying to have clear dedicated revenue sources. The water and sewer, as again in the budget, in the presentation earlier, have a dedicated revenue stream charged that will go into those funds for those specific purposes of planning for future replacement as quick and as it wears out. Same thing for events and activities, you're already collecting those fees, you may not know it, but you do have the harvest fund, which I use as the fund to put all activities in. It's actually got a positive cash balance in it of carryover funds, because you've made money on that for a number of years. Some of the highlights, there's a couple that I forgot, they don't mention, but new water and sewer rate structure based upon the county manual. Vehicle tax increase to match county rates. Right now, whenever there's a difference between the county and the town, the county's supposed to collect the difference, this will remove the need for us to, for the county to do that, and at the same time, it will generate modest increase in revenues. All other tax rates remain the same in the budget. No across-the-board raises for staff, two hundred dollar per full-time employee, going this in December, if there's enough money in the contingency, should we decide to extend that or a portion of that to part-time. Moving two part-time employees to full-time in this budget, and a six hundred dollar per year raise for council members, and mayor, and a two hundred dollar per year raise for the commission members. This, there's two other initiatives that I forgot to put in there that I think are going to be very significant. One is getting a cloud-based board management system. It will really automate things and also make our record keeping, getting things posted on the internet and available to the public for searching. Tremendous step forward, use these systems in the past as far as citizen transparency, they're great tools, and they're also very good for the staff to make their jobs more efficient. Another is recodifying our code and going on the internet with it. I really learned in doing the budget that there's been a lot of changes that I didn't know, that were nuanced, that you had to go back and actually cross out things in the text, so you knew what the current law was, and I found a few surprises in there. So this recodification, it's been a number of years, and once you get it up there, you pass ordinance, you send it down to them, they reincorporate that, so your code is current at all times and searchable, very, very nicely. Your revenues, the one thing that skews this is I put in, I thought incorrectly that we'd be doing the sewer project by now, but that we'll just reappropriate that six million for the C I P. Again, what this reflects is one of the issues that, as a policy issue, we need to talk about, I wasn't quite sure how to do it. This E D A, you can either give the money to them and get them off your books, or the money's in our treasury in a separate E D A account. It was appropriated for a specific purpose. I don't know if that was meant to revert, but the money's still sitting in that account. What I'm proposing here is you keep the money there and you appropriate a line item for them to spend on. We do have, and I didn't know that in my deal, but we do have one grant, facade grant request, but we do have a line item outside of this fifty thousand dollars in the town operating budget that can address that. That's sort of a policy decision, there's fifty thousand in that fund, instead of this separate fund. Events funds, I put all your events in there, it'll generate, these are the revenues that they generate, it will generate thirty-nine thousand dollars in fees. Debt service, we have the three oh one real estate tax that are dedicated to the debt service fund, because that's what their payments are supposed to be for. The water fund for operating will generate two ninety-three, the capital reserve fund a hundred and four, and the city system three eighty-two, and the capital reserve sixty-nine, almost seventy thousand dollars, and those are based upon the numbers that we've looked at tonight. Some people see, can see things better in graphic form, so you can see fifty percent of our revenues are general fund, twenty percent for the sewer operating, fifteen for the water, and so forth. Is that current or is that projected for two thousand nineteen? That's two thousand nineteen. The general fund, how that breaks out, as you can see, the meals tax is your largest revenue producer, twenty-two percent bank franchise tax, and real estate, those three generate over fifty percent of your budget. So those are, those are what keep us going. The miscellaneous, there's ten percent, but you collect from a variety of sources, from the state funds on your personal property tax replacement, to your police grant of twenty-nine thousand dollars, and so forth. As you can see, the occupancy tax really doesn't generate that much, it's really that meals tax that you wanted to tap into. In your other funds, it just shows you the breakout between the water and sewer activities. Your activity funds generate four percent, the three oh one tax district, four percent, that's the twenty-five thousand dollar fund balance, and these are what the sewer and water resources will be. Fifty thousand dollars fund balance? There's a fifty thousand, but I talked about appropriating twenty-five back to the E D A this year, could be any amount, there's fifty thousand in cash there, that was just an arbitrary number. So here are the proposed expenditures, with your general fund being your largest share, and then, I'm not hearing all the numbers, but those are the numbers behind the pie charts that we just showed. And here's how it breaks out, again, with the two largest offices in general fund are the council and manager, and we also have some general overhead costs in that, and then the clerk treasurer. Does the clerk treasurer's increase thirty thousand dollars? Yeah. And those are, you'll have line item budgets, I can't tell you off the top of my head where that comes from. And here again, graphically, it shows you how we break out between council, treasurer, debt service, water operation, public works. Can you bring up the gray side, listen, please? And as you can see, the zeros, there are those items that I've moved to new line item. Twenty-three thousand dollar increase in police budget, correct? Correct, correct. Okay, thank you. And here again, graphically, and I'll give you copies of these slides, with the increase in the police department, that puts it up to five percent of our overall expenditures. You spend four percent of your budget on events and activities, one percent on donations, one percent there on E D A operations at the twenty-five, and then the rest gets broke out with Public Works being the largest individual general fund cost center. And of course, that debt service, if we did, and again, one of the things they're going to talk about next week is if, one of the things that I was unaware of is that the treatment plan for the alpha levels, gross alphas, may be a regulatory issue which we have to address, and I'm not sure what the cost would be on that. So they're going to talk to us next Thursday on that, whether it's a regulatory issue, and if so, what type of finance and whether we could get grant or loan on that. So that's something that we're still working on, but it could have some impact on that going forward. So how many of our wells have gross alpha issues? It's the one, the well, five, is it? Well, five. It's the big one, it's the, it's the big producing well. And historically, and we're checking it out, is one lab gives us readings that says we're in the green zone, and one lab that says we're not.
Yeah, one of them's like two and a half percent, or it could be all.
And yeah, the plus or minus on it is great, so Billy's going to send, we've had it done at different times with the different labs, we're going to send samples to the labs at the same time to see, see if it is, the variance is because of the timing when we took the samples, or if it's difference in the laboratories. So the bottom line, now this looks scary, but it's not as scary as it is. This is what our auditors are telling us, that we ended up as an unassigned fund balance. There's still, is it fair, Melissa, to say, they're still discussing whether that's the accurate number or not. It's been, again, restructuring the books, particularly with the archaic accounting system mid-year, and then having three different accountants work and picking up other people's work has led to some confusion. Now, this big use of fund balance, some of it has actually been, we've spent money on, or going to spend money on projects. A good share of it is accounting entries, we've transferred fund balance from the general fund to the water and sewer funds, to give them working capital and positive cash balances. Some of it's not going to be spent, I have it in a line item in our current budget in the C I P, and just, we'll see. But we've been spending right up to our limits in each one of the operating budgets, primarily in shifting money out of the day-to-day items to the repair and maintenance budgets, particularly in the water and sewer programs. But we're even running into that here in Public Works and Town Hall maintenance. So the bottom line is, is we're going to, down in our general fund, we're going to be drawing it down to about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. On a cash flow basis, Melissa and I have been looking at, it looks like our sort of low points on cash flows are around five to six hundred thousand dollars right now, but that includes money from the water and sewer funds also. That's getting at the, at the lower end of my comfort level, that's why I really think we need to go to the monthly reading on the system, and, but it's still, you're still in good enough shape, I'll keep repeating it, the problem is, is some of our larger tax, like the bank franchise tax, doesn't come in until June, you know. until June, you know. Your property tax, which is another one of your big revenue generators, doesn't come until December. Your people tax doesn't come in until March. You know, those, those big lump sum payments coming in way into your fiscal year, you've got to have the cash to carry you through there. And then you really do, I mean, down in Essex County, you didn't know a tornado was going to come through, and you had to do something, and why the state ultimately reimbursed us down there, it took a year, year to 18 months to get the money. So they're counting on you using cash on hand to handle those things until they can, they can make you right.
So what would it take to restructure the tax, property tax, take it to collect it twice a, twice a year?
You're just going to do ordinance change and be sure that you get your mailing list and what have you done. And you can do it for personal property tax too. I did that, and the fact of that, it also gives you some one-time monies, because you're collecting it in two fiscal years. Because your first, first time you implement it, you're collecting it in June, which is the current fiscal year you're in, and then you'll collect it again in December, in the next June. So you'll get your fiscal years there. So you pick up that, that first collection is a lump sum to your liquidity. And I, and I did that down in Essex to help there, and boost your fund balance at the end of the year too, because you collected before. So the next step is, I was hoping to get, at least for the public hearing, some direction on the rates, whether you want to go with what we propose, or if you want me to make some modifications to it. Then we have a budget workshop scheduled for the 19th, a schedule we adopted earlier. I should have known we had another date. Also indicated, if we didn't finish everything at the first workshop, that we could set a second date. We adopted that back in December. Budget hearing targeted for May 3rd, and then adoption of budget and rates and appropriation at your June meeting. Now, one thing that's worth noting, and it's in your packet tonight, to change your rate structures and to do things, you've got to pass ordinance to get rid of the old system, which is the 219 to 339 and what have you, and I put language in there to set during your annual budget process. Basically, I said, set up your ordinances, whether it's the vehicle tax or the water and sewer rates, to have it, so you can just do it as part of your budget resolution. The ones that you're not going to change or encode already at the maximum, like the transient occupancy tax, those, the bank franchise tax, you've got those specific levels written into your ordinances at the state maximum. So those, you just don't even talk about, and then during your annual budget, we would, we would set the rates. But I need to have that ordinance passed before we can adopt this rate structure, or else we've got to adopt, the old rate structure is what we'll have to use. So that's, that's one thing to know.
You'll need to adopt that to change the structure, whatever you change it to, correct?
Right, right. That'll have to be passed before you adopt the budget. And while I do have it in the budget packet of having the budget ad and the rate ad is one, on reflection, I think I'm going to do it as two separate ads, and I think what we need to add to it is what Bonnie asked for tonight. In addition to the rates, I'll put in the section that, you know, the impact varies by use, examples of the impact on your rate from the current rate, and then give them that table that I had in the presentation, which is like 1,500 gallons, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 6, 8, and 10. That should be enough to give them a good sense of what the changes would be. So that's the presentation. The unknown is, is even though those percentages look large, I'm not, I don't know how people will react, you know. I'm assuming people will, I know the first thing I do, is I go to low, get a low-flow showerhead and things like that, which can have some dramatic impacts, particularly in the larger homes. But you're going to have people use less water, there's no doubt about it. I don't even know how many users we have in each bracket. A good share of our users could be in that 1,500 to 2,000, which is a smaller percentage increase than the families like Jason, who is in the 67% bracket, I think you were in. So I just basically, in the budget, so you know, I just projected basically generating the same operating expenses, and all the additional revenues, I took the hard numbers I had from the capital charge administrator. So I only, only projected the increase of the two combined, which I think is about 170,000 in revenues. That's it.
So do you want our recommendation of further discussion on the water and sewer proposals during the work session?
My recommendation was going to be that the town manager bring it back at least two other options at the work session. Or at least one other option, so we can, we can see something else, but here's something I'm going to throw out here, just so you know. When I go ahead and advertise the budget and the rates, I can go higher, I can go lower. I can always change things to go lower, but you can't go higher. Would you agree with that?
Without re-advertising.
Without re-advertising. So to keep on that time schedule, if you're just going to do the publication of the budget, you've got to do it seven days before. My budget, you only have to do it once, seven days, seven days before. So if you decide to wait to the work session, you're going to have to push it off. We're going to talk about the newspapers, but to keep our rates reasonable, we've got to publish on.
Tuesdays.
Special day Tuesday, and give the documents up there. So we'd have to look at the timing as we're going to the work session, what that to push off.
Does it have to go in the newspaper, or can it be down on the website?
No, has to be in the newspaper.
Any questions, any questions on the, on the budget presentation? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
This is where I like to pull out section.
There's already a motion and a second.
Pull out section D, job description, to take that into a closed session.
We actually already have a closed session.
Can't do job descriptions.
We can't do job descriptions, but the job, the.
Okay, hold it. You've got a motion and a second on the table. So there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. You need some other action to undo that, so.
Is there any further discussion? I do have a closed session motion written to discuss what we talked about.
Okay, no, I'm good then.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, motion by Martin, second by Tyler, to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? If not, raise your right hand, all on paper. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Due to the last printing of the Caroline progress, we need to designate a newspaper of record.
I don't think you actually have to select one yet. I think you're just looking for consensus, right?
Yeah, it has to be general circulation in the county.
Yeah, council doesn't have to commit, you just kind of, because there may come a time where one paper's not workable and you have to go to another.
Based off of the, your packet, do you see the different costs? Is there a consensus that our first choice be the freelance staff?
Yes.
Oh, just kidding, yeah, okay. So that's duly noted. Is there a motion to schedule a hearing for fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget and utility rates?
Okay, so you're going to have a work session, and you're going to explore other options?
Should we wait and set that later? I mean, we could, we could schedule.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I just try to get things done early, but you technically don't have to appropriate, approve your budget till July 1st. So we just, we just put that up until sometime May, and.
What was the ballpark date for this?
It was set up so you could have your budget hearing far enough in advance of your main meeting, so you could.
Yeah, I think the work session would be April 19th, is that what I saw there?
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable scheduling the hearing after the work session, because we would have a little bit better understanding. So, I mean, if we're going to schedule one tonight, I'd say we schedule it for our main meeting, but we can always wait till April to schedule it for a main meeting. That would be my recommendation, wait till April and schedule it for a main meeting. I mean, I'm sorry, at the work session.
You can recess tonight until April 19th.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Okay, I'm going to be out of town on the 19th, so I may call then. I'll be out of town, but it's in Pittsburgh.
I will also, I'll, I'll be in Pittsburgh, I'll be in Wisconsin. The budget would, can move without.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So we'll recess till the 19th, and that night, if I'm available, I'll. That's right, we won't have anybody. Can we move this? Mayor, invite mayor.
You can do that, you can just select that night. Unless you want to try to find a time when everybody can do it.
Yeah, maybe I'd like to try to get as many people here as possible. When will you be back, what?
I'll be back on the 20th.
So if we moved it, if we go the 20, any, I'm gone until the 26th, but as long as all the captains here.
We can do it that Monday or Tuesday, the following week.
The 23rd or 24th. Work for everybody on the 23rd, work for everybody. Okay, the 23rd?
You can just do it later, and you can also do a special meeting.
If we get it in on the 24th. I was thinking on the 17th.
It's 17 for the budget.
So if you put it in on the 24th, that's, that will give you more than, it would be like 10, 18. Okay, so is the 23rd work for everybody else? We'll do the work session on the 23rd? Seven? 6:30, what do you, you'll be running late. 6:30 work session? C is where we have to. We'll leave it on that, item C, number 17.
I'd like to have that done either way, because Melissa, if you go through that, it's just basically allowing us to set up your, you already have that for your real property tax, your personal property tax, it says to set those rates as part of the budget process, so I just like.
But one of your options is to supplement the war fund from the general fund.
Yeah, we can still do that. All it says is the utility rates will be set by, during the annual budget process.
But what if you have to increase your tax rates?
That's just, our tax rates are set up the same way, you go through the annual budget process. Because I took this language from the other sections of the code, just trying to make it consistent, except for the sections, like I said, the transient occupancy tax and the bank tax, which are always set at the maximum level. And it's just a way to practice, like, it's kind of administrative, it just makes it easier, instead of going in and changing some of this language and percentage, rate structures would be a possibility to establish it.
What's the difference between B and C? One is budget and utility rates.
C is going back, if you look at the tab there, it's going back into the ordinance and changing the language to say, to get rid of all that stuff by 220, you know, 295, 399, to say, public utility rates and fees are going to be set by the town house, those parts of the annual budget.
B is the numbers, C is the process. B is what are the numbers.
But I recommend that you set them by ordinance.
But we're not doing that in other sections, we're not doing that in real property, we're not doing it in personal property. And this really does make the process easier for me. It, it is consistent with other parts of our ordinance.
Well, what we can do is, we can still discuss this, and at the April 19th, if we want to schedule that public hearing, no, the 23rd, we can just move it to, we can also set that public hearing that night also.
But this one takes two publications, and yes, including doctors.
I don't, I don't think you can do that. I think that if you're going to collect a fee, you have to do it by ordinance. For whatever. And you can adopt the budget by resolution, and so if your fees are all set by ordinance, then that gives you more flexibility if you want to amend your budget later, because then you don't have to amend it by ordinance.
Can y'all discuss this, and then if we have to set a special meeting to have a public hearing, we'll just make it work before then. Just so we, I mean, I want y'all to be on the same page, so we all feel comfortable with, and you fully understand, and he fully understands the situation, and that can be talked about outside of the public meeting. So we'll, we'll hold off on item C at this point. Item D, schedule a public hearing for ordinance 2018-005, and ordinance to repeal and replace the town's side ordinance. Is there a motion to schedule that public hearing? There's a motion, is there a second?
Also.
Second motion?
And when is it scheduled for?
This is scheduled for the main, the third. Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Let me have one question on that, maybe, I'm ready, or is there any grandfather clause in here for existing signage, or has everybody forgotten where the signage is up to date for the new ordinance?
No, anybody that was in compliance with the old ordinance, the old ordinance, as long as they were compliant with the old ordinance, and that they go to.
I think it's section 3-1931, compliance on this, it sounds lawfully existed on effective date of this article prior to the ordinance, so it isn't. Is there a motion, move to the 10, 19, item E, to adopt the resolution 2018?
Did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did, we all did. Item nineteen, is there a motion to adopt the resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero zero one? USDA resolutions of the governing body? It's in your packet, would you like me to
That's a grant for the trust.
This is the grant for the person of the public works vehicle.
I'm gonna motion that we adopt the resolution R two thousand eighteen dash zero zero one.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Tyler. Is there any question? All in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? We'll go ahead and knock out the council committee's minutes of comments, and then we'll, we'll have a motion here for a closed session. What?
No, for the, the committee met, it was a work session, I weren't able to make it there, it was a discussion, general discussion, I think it was going on. DEA did have a meeting, I think that was prior to, after the last council meeting. So it's a discussion in DEA about things that were happening in there, some structure going in, some movement going forward. We'll break some details next council meeting in regards to that. But I understand we had somebody apply for the
Right.
And who was that?
Mark, soon for the, the store, crossing the text belt, the other text belt. Again, this is by, beside program.
Right, and I've also, also met with the folks at Fermi Knopf, and I told them to come to the town. They just put up a new sign over there, and it had a couple things on the front that they did. I said, come in, and the town would like to help you with that, because there was sort of a side appearance. I would expect them to come in the next couple of weeks, she's up.
In all looks of it, we have a new brush truck, will be opening
We believe that's coming in, yeah, that's what I, I understand, and
I saw the truck out there today, so
Yeah, so that's a good thing, that's good.
Ricardo.
Ricardo?
Yes, Ricardo. The thing was, another guy was up in
Do they have any affiliation with the N E P?
Yeah, they do, they They work at the, one in Ashland, the same one in here in Colton Church. Media wealth, yeah, thank you. They work for the guy in Ashland.
So will they have, will they meet?
Yes.
Thanks for asking that question.
Maybe we'll have a work session there.
Get them to carry that for you before meetings. We'll get them to carry you a few before council meetings.
That'd be good.
What is that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Otis.
And the ordinance and policy committed report, and the airport committed, will be, will be, we're in the re, recall, re-qualification report, the poll. And they can, they, they, they can do the counter they made. The three proposals are American legal, general code, and And M U N I field view.
Meaniture. Meaniture. Okay. So you'll be bringing that recommendation in then? Or?
Budgeting personnel.
Thank you.
Here we are.
Thank you. And I don't have anything, I don't think I have at this point. Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code section
Two point two dash thirty
Two point two dash thirty-seven, one, one, eighty-one? For the purpose of discussion regarding the salaries of three specific employees?
Mister Mayor, may I ask you a question for you adjourned?
No, we'll talk
They're not adjourned.
No, it relates to
We'll wait, we'll
I was trying to wait till anybody know what to ask.
I'll answer the question.
I've got a motion.
Do the motion
Okay.
And then take away.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, okay.
Motion by Tyler? Is there a second? Second by Otis? All, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? We'll take a five at every instance.
ISO certified.
ISO certified?
ISO certified, yes. So if I am seeing Mark did not certify that?
No.
Correct.
So what would that actually be, because he didn't certify?
No.
It's a no vote.
Okay, so I will start this discussion. The numbers, if I understand correctly, in this budget, at the last page of table eight, That increase from the clerk treasurer line and the increase from the police department line does not That specific number does not reflect only a salary increase. That could be increases in other areas of that line item budget.
I've got it. Now, to your question. What my statement was, was I was planning on going full-time with Tracy out there. As I've told you, that your record systems messed up your, your, your whole
Totally understand.
Administrator's structure. So when you ask, is there gonna be increase? Yes, for Tracy to come here full-time, there would have been all sorts of benefits and what have you. So in a sense, we put together a proposal of that rearranging that she be part-time, it was her benefits. And which were cost more than what Tracy's benefits. There may be a three thousand dollars difference from that intended
Can we, can we talk about the position titles, not names?
Okay. The minister, Assistant Administrative Director. Well, Tracy was gonna come on as, as, I can't remember what the title was, but it was a lower, lower paid group. And we talked about the restructuring. We had processes up to talk to the appropriate oversight committees. And put things on the consent calendar. I mean, the council makes a decision, if you don't want to follow through on that, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, and my, my question to you was, is that my concern was that I asked for a spreadsheet from you, which you willingly said that you would do. And I did not see that.
Well, I'll check, I believe I sent that to you. And, and also, just to practice too, I, with Gmail, did you check?
Checked, they're both my emails.
Well, I'll, I'll check, because I definitely sent it to you.
Yeah, well, I
Because you called one day on the phone and said you have it, and I sent it five minutes later.
Didn't, did not see it, I checked all my emails. But anyway, you'll send it back, back out, spreadsheet and that. And then the second question is on the, on the budget on the police line, that's a twenty-two thousand dollar increase. Is that all salary increase?
It's salary benefits.
So
Just going full-time, then we can discuss this, and it brings you back up to your level two years ago. Because you gotta pay the R S and health and, and that, in addition to, um, the bump in salary.
So is that a salary position, or is that an hourly position?
That's a, that's, that will go to exempt position.
Okay, so it's not necessarily forty hours a week, it's whatever it takes to do the job, right?
Correct.
That's fine. Is that a change that we need to make in, in the, the position or the job description?
Right, we gotta make that the full-time position exempt, and I didn't do that at this point, because that wasn't approved in the budget.
Okay, so we need to get that done.
But I moved forward with this other one, guidance, discussions with the divided personnel committee. And the general consensus I picked up at the council, that that was the direction that we were gonna go for restructuring with the clerk treasurer's office.
And again, I'll state this again to you, I have no issue with the, the way it was done, other than the fact was It was gonna be a budget mutual issue, and it is not. It's a thirty thousand dollar impact to the
From what I was gonna propose, and I kept making that clear, it depends on what your baseline is.
No, you did not make it clear, but anyway, we don't need to argue at that point. I'm good with where you are with the restructuring, I think it's very appropriate. I think it gives Melissa a lot of flexibility where she needs her life. It's good to have this other life, you almost got the skill levels. I was just concerned because I was told it was gonna be budgeted. So that was what the question was about.
Okay, is that, is that your question? Is there any other comments or questions regarding this meeting?
We're gonna recess.
There's a note, there's an informational item, item twenty, tab, tab twenty, a invitation to local heroes award. We're gonna recess this meeting to April twenty-third at six thirty P M. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion there.
Is there a second? Second by Otis? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, we are recessed until April twenty-third at six thirty P M.